It's 6:00 PM. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 13th, 2021 meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. Since we're all on video, we can take role. Has everybody reviewed the draft minutes? And are there any issues or questions? None being heard, we'll move on to correspondence, if any, Mr. Mead.
Mr. Chair, no correspondence, other than that related to items on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Next item, it will be new business. I had a have a request that we change the order and conclude the public hearing on the dock replacement first. On how I'll say the.
No objection here.
Okay, we will proceed with public hearing SDP 2021-0008. The Omar Brownson Dock Replacement. We have a staff presentation.
All right, welcome, everybody. Thank you for gathering this evening. So this is a shoreline substantial development permit. Hearing, public hearing for the replacement of an existing dock on Dover Drive. So the project history for this dock replacement, it started in March of 20 2021. I'm sorry, I'm getting a bunch of pop-ups. Okay. It started with a preliminary pre-application meeting, which is mandatory for this type of project on March 23rd. The formal application was submitted on May 21st of 2021. It was noted that a mandatory neighborhood meeting was needed for this type of application. So that occurred on June 22nd. On July 30th, the application was deemed complete for processing. August 4th is when the notice of application with the optional CIPA was published in the American, as well as posted on site and mailed to the surrounding property owners. The comment period ended on September 3rd. And on September 10th, staff issued a CIPA determination of non-significance for this project. And on the 22nd, we published the notice of hearing. So the proposal is to replace an existing 522 square foot dock. The existing dock includes a six-foot by 12-foot timber pier, a three-foot by 30-foot ramp, and an eight-foot by 45-foot float, along with three 12-inch creosote pilings. The replacement will be for a 441 square foot dock, which would include three-foot by 36-foot fiberglass grated ramp with an eight-foot by 45-foot float that has composite decking, which allows for light penetration. And this would be secured with four 10-inch steel pilings that will have float stops. So that way it doesn't sit on the bottom. The Shoreline Management Act is what controls this type of project, being that it is located within shoreline jurisdiction and is therefore subject to the City of Anacortes SMP. The subject property is within shoreline residential shoreline environment designation, with most of this work occurring within the aquatic shoreline environment designation. And private piers and docks are permitted use within both of these designations. So here is an aerial view where the little star is of where the project will take place. This picture is from 2006, so there is an existing residence that is there currently. And you can see the existing dock there. So the key points to kind of take away from this project is that the proposed dock is self-mitigating, meaning that additional compensation mitigation is not proposed, being that the dock is getting smaller. It will be a reduction in overwater coverage, as well as removing those creosote pilings, which is one of the goals of the shoreline master program. The aquatic designation does allow for those private piers and docks and floats, specifically in this area of Flounders Bay. There is no anticipated loss of ecological function, being that it's known, not a new development, there currently is something there. And again, this is going to be a reduction in that overwater coverage. The proposed dock is similar to surrounding properties. As you can see, pretty much everyone in that little cove has a dock. And that that's proposed dock is to be smaller in size than the existing. With that, staff recommendation is based upon the application materials, the finding of fact, the conclusions within the staff report. That staff therefore recommends the planning commission approve the shoreline substantial development permit, subject to the proposed conditions of approval.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Emily, I apologize. We weren't able to see your screen when you were sharing.
Are you sure? Nobody said anything?
Sorry.
Okay, we'll run it back. Bear with me a moment.
Yeah, maybe just highlight the points of the screen. Thank you.
That's frustrating. Okay, it was a good one, too. Okay. So I'll just kind of run through the slides, so you can see the pictures that are associated, because I think they're helpful for this project. So this is where where that red box is. That is the existing dock with the existing residence. This just outlines the project history that I ran through, meaning essentially that the project ultimately started in March and is now hopefully coming to an end in October. So here is a sketch of the existing dock, which is 522 square feet. You can see the float with the ramp and the pier that it currently sits on. And this is what's proposed. That timber pier towards the left hand of that picture is going to be taken out and replaced with just a little concrete slab, which is what the ramp will sit on. And here are those permitted uses within the shoreline master program for the piers. And this is that picture I was referencing, so you can see all the boats and existing single-use docks that are out on that property. And those key points. I think the biggest one is, again, that it is getting smaller, that it's similar to surrounding uses. And with that, staff's recommendation of approval as conditioned. And thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Do we have any representatives from the owners to speak to? None being heard. Shall we open the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I see that there are three people with their hands up.
I'm stuck on the PowerPoint. So I can't see who's there. Okay, there you go. Thank you.
So shall we hear from the people who want to speak?
Logan Brown is first in line, so go ahead, Logan. Please state your address.
Yes, yeah, so so my name is Logan Brown. I am the general manager at Marine Floats, the agent for the applicant. And the address is 313 East F Street, Tacoma, Washington. Is this getting through to you guys?
Yes. We're listening, go right ahead.
Thank you. I I just really, I just wanted to say thank you to the City of Anacortes staff for their review. And obviously, we we agree with their staff report. And I just wanted to make myself available for for any questions.
Are there any questioners from the commission?
I just, it's a dumb question. What is self, what is this, does a self-mitigating dock? What is the definition? I don't, I have never heard that term before, and I apologize for my sophomore question.
I can answer that. You know, it would probably differ based on which agency you're talking to. But I think, I think the 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 reason this project is self-mitigating is that it it decreases the overall footprint, which is always a big question when it comes to environmental impact is just the size. Okay. But it but it also has, you know, more environmentally friendly materials, including the removal of creosote piling, replacement with steel piling, which are inert. And and then the 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 new dock surfaces are are they have light penetrable grading to the maximum extent possible. So that that, you know, that that it comes with an environmental benefit in that fashion. It's also sealed flotation. I believe the existing dock has, you know, exposed foam, which, you know, deteriorates over time. So getting that out of the water is always a good thing. So those, those are the factors that 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 we would make us at least argue for the self-mitigating moniker.
So you would call it a essentially a state-of-the-art, small dock installation?
Yeah, 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 of course. It's.
Ms. Martin, I see your hand up.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Ms. Morgan. Is this the right time, or should I wait till after the public hearing?
I am afraid to answer now.
So it it seems like this is a no-brainer. It seems great. The only question I have is about the float. And you've you've listed in the law that the floats are limited to eight-foot by 30-foot, and this is a 45-foot. So I'm not sure if that means, you know, there's some grandfathering that can happen, because it's replacing an existing. And then the question is, if that's the case in your recommendations with your, you know, the things that you specify need to happen. I noticed that the float isn't mentioned there at all. So is it just an assumption that it's okay to put the 45-foot float in?
So this was kind of an item that I was reviewing deeply on this project. Because yes, typically, if you are, you know, a brand-new property that doesn't have a dock, and you're going to put in a new pier or float, it is required to be that 30 feet unless you go through with that shoreline variance. However, as you had stated, this project is, you know, replacing something that's already there. The impact is already existing. In a, in a way, it's getting less. And another point for it being the 45 feet is for navigation, safe navigation and mooring of boats. So because it is kind of a tight little area, that's essentially a man-made dredged cove. You know, that sediment piles up, and this just allows, so you don't have boats sitting on the on the ground, which can cause, you know, bigger environmental impact.
So again, the question is, shouldn't there be something listed in the recommendations from staff? If we're going to approve this with recommendations, shouldn't there be something somehow mentioning that 45-foot versus what the whatever it is?
About the conditions of approval?
Yeah, yeah.
In a way, they kind of are included without specifically being called out, because it is, I believe it's condition of approval number one. Let me pull up my staff report here that calls out. Then bear with me a second. Yeah, so the project, scope of the project shall not exceed that as set out in the shoreline permit application, which is what has been proposed here today, would be that float size.
Except that, under the findings of fact, you do call it out. And you, as required by SMP DR 9 dot 5 dot 13, floats are to be limited to eight-foot by 30-foot? I don't know. Seems like it should be called out somehow in the qualifications.
I'll leave that up to the commission to decide whether they want to add that float specification. But again, my personal reviewer is that it has been captured within that first condition, because it's all all-encompassing. It's adopting, you know, the site plan, the application materials, the JARPA, the CIPA, all of those documents as currently proposed. That is what's being approved. But again, it's up to you if you'd like to add that condition. I'll leave that up for discussion.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mr. Mead.
Ms. Martin, if I might mention, under 5.5 on page four of seven, at the bottom of the page, it talks about DR 9.5 by 15. And one of the considerations for showing the permit is that that the designers also have to take into consideration mooring of the vessels and determine, in this case, especially since it's a replacement, the minimum length necessary to meet the needs of the water-dependent use, which in this case is 45 feet. And that's listed in that section 5.5. So I feel pretty comfortable that we're, we've addressed it.
Thank you.
We had, did we have another person wanting to speak tonight?
I don't see any other hands.
Okay, thank you. If there are no objections, we will close the public hearing and continue with any further discussion. The commissioners have any further questions or or items they wish to discuss?
Do you need a motion? Do you need a motion?
Certainly do.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this this application.
A second.
To clarify, this is approving the motion or approving the application with conditions as set forth in the staff report. All right, Mr. Court, right?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ruther?
Yes.
Mr. Juretsky?
Yes.
Mr. Mullenova?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries. Project is approved by the planning commission.
And again, sorry for the presentation mishap. This technology just never gets any easier.
No worries.
We did switch up on you and start you early.
Did, I wasn't prepared. All right, well, thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the second item, the bonus height provisions in the R4 use zone. A concept discussion. Mr. Mead, do you have a presentation, or does someone from your staff?
Mr. Chair, I'll take care of that this evening, and I have a presentation and a PowerPoint. So, first of all, again, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission and the audience. This evening's discussion is related to the bonus site provisions of Anacortes Minnesota Code Section 19.42.050C, which would allow for an additional 10-foot over the base height of 40-foot in the R4 use zone, therefore, up to 50-foot and typically five stories. The additional 10-foot would be allowed if the building contained 25% of the living units, not more than 600 square feet, or provided a number of affordable units. A moratorium was adopted by the city council on the acceptance of permit applications proposing the use of the provisions of small units to increase height in 2019. And that moratorium has been extended as recently as last Monday night by the city council for another six months. The moratorium applies to the R4 use zone west of of the commercial use zone, which is west of Commercial Avenue. So it's only applies to the R4 use zone west of Commercial Avenue. A public meeting was held February 25th, 2020, with the community to gather information and comments on several, seven different concepts, which we will take a look at here in a few minutes. A summary of the meeting is included in your packet on the concepts, and we have received two comments from the public, which were transmitted to the commissioners by email earlier this week, I believe, yesterday. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and work into my PowerPoint, if I can get my screen to share appropriately. Can you see that?
Not yet.
Yes?
No.
No. Let's try that one more time. Failed. Gonna start over on that. Yeah. How's that?
Not yet.
Okay. Not wanting to share the way I'd like so.
There you go.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay. There we go. Thank you. And I appreciate your patience. So this evening, we'll be talking a little bit about the R4 zone building height. And that is in regards to bonus heights in that R4 zone. And so ordinance 34 was effective 8/5/19. That was a major code rewrite of the development regulations. With it as an incentive and an option of a bonus height was an option in several zones, including the R4 zone. And so it's been a matter of some discussion since, since a new permit was issued for a 50-foot tall apartment building in the R4 zone west of Commercial Avenue, and it was based on the height provisions of AMC 1942050, the small units, not more than 600 square feet, and 25%. So the R4 zone, if you got the map up in front of you on the screen there, this, you can see it's this area mostly in here and in the surrounded by blue. Map's a little small, I know, but it's really half from Commercial over. So this is the code section that discusses the bonus height provisions. And you can see that there are two options. One option is the small units, where at least 25% of the total dwelling units contain no more than 600 square feet. The other is the affordable units. With the affordable units, you can see that there are some standards that are required for that as well. For every three dwelling units occupied for area, but based on that height, at least one affordable dwelling unit must be integrated into the development. And I might mention that the current moratorium does not include the affordable units, such that it would encourage the use of the bonus height to acquire more affordable units. The Anacortes Family Center is using that for their new building. And ordinance 3054 established the moratorium, Resolution 2068, reaffirmed the moratorium and adopted a work plan. Since the pandemic, the moratorium has been extended by ordinance 3069, 3076, 3088, which expires on October 12th. And as I mentioned, as of last Monday night, a ordinance was adopted by the city council extending the moratorium an additional six months. And I'll be returning to city council with a resolution adopting the work plan. And we'll talk a little bit about the actual scheduling on that work plan coming up. Coming up right here, project timeline. So we went to the council to gain some feedback from them. September 20th, last Monday, we extended the moratorium. And then today, here at the planning commission, to just have a brief conversation on the on the concepts and and start, sort of start the ball rolling on more more comment from the public and more interaction with the community. So we're hoping it through October, November. So most likely early November, we'll be back at the planning commission with another public meeting. I will also get out more notice to the community that these meetings are going to be taking place, so that we can get more interaction with the community. And January, February, March, and hoping somewhere towards the end of March, we'll be able to go back to city council with a recommendation from the planning commission on some new language as an amendment to the development regulations regarding bonus height. Little bit of background, always helpful. So in planning for the future, we're looking at a projected population in 2036 of about 22,293, which is an additional almost 6,000 people and over 2,000 dwelling units. So with the comprehensive plan and the vulnerable regulations, the whole idea there is to, you know, install regulations that will look towards that future and hopefully accommodate at least a good share of those of those people who are looking to move to Anacortes. The housing issues in Anacortes. Population growth, increased demand, it's a desirable place to live. Right now, well, as a matter of fact, we have been at a less than 1% rental vacancy rate for a few years now. And some of that is due to limited land, housing supply. 80% of the existing stock is single-family detached units. Since 2010, there have only been 81 multifamily units built. And then island geography is another reason that we're not seeing, or we're not seeing a lot of multifamily units. Now, I will admit that this year, we're, because of the development regulation changes that the planning commission worked so hard on and council adopted, we're starting to see more townhomes, more cottages, and more accessory dwelling units than we've seen in years past. So as we think about that, that means now we have a larger variety of homes available to those folks that are interested. The 2016 plan update, accommodating anticipated growth within the city to protect the surrounding forest lands and parklands, minimize sprawl, promote housing densities and types in all price ranges to meet range of housing needs and respond to change of needs and preferences. So right now, there is no maximum density in the R4, commercial or the central business district. Encourage infill on vacant and underutilized land. Provide for development of multifamily housing in areas close to shopping, such as the R4, the commercial and the central business district. And evaluate barriers to achieving increased density in multifamily and mixed-use zones, and revise regulations if appropriate. And so as we went through the comprehensive plan, the planning commission spent numerous meetings, somewhere around 80 meetings, along with filling the council chambers many times, and came up with various policies and goals to help achieve those those guides. This is just showing some, you know, diverse housing options that are. And this is just showing some, you know, diverse housing options that are possible. We don't really have any buildings that look like that here in town, except for a couple of the single families. Um barriers to multifamily construction and again. Since two thousand and ten, only eighty-one multifamily units built citywide. Compared to eight hundred and forty-nine single family units, fifty-five townhomes and forty-one accessory dwelling units. So some of the possible barriers are the historic policies favoring single family development. The restricted form and intensity standards by that uh we mean lot size. Uh setbacks, maximum lot coverage, things like that. Building costs, including parking, financing challenges, condo uh construction liability laws. Uh although a- as of twenty twenty-one, those are less restrictive. And allows for more condo construction without, without the insurance liability that was tagged on to it in the um. Early, early uh two thousands. Lack of a si- incentive. What we've heard from many of the developers, it just doesn't pencil unless you have. A little bit of a uh incentive to get there. So. Development regulations updated in twenty nineteen, implementing the key cop plan. Land use and and housing policies changes. Changes to zone designations per the comprehensive plan. New standards for housing types, including small lot and accessory dwelling units. Cottages, townhomes, apartments, condominiums. Expanded provisions. For accessory dwelling units, including changes to height, parking, location standards, et cetera, so. The uh. Accessory dwelling units used to require an additional parking space on site. That was changed during the development regulation process. To allow for an accessory dwelling unit without having the additional parking space on site, it could be on street if there were available on-street parking. New site building design standards. Parking code updates to bring requirements in into alignment with the actual parking brand needs. And new affordable housing provisions and bonus incentives, e.g. the bonus height incentives. These are just examples of the small lot. And some open space standards that are required for those by the new developer regulations. And then some of the larger multifamily buildings with the maximum facade intervals and. And how your needs to be broken up and you basically just can't build. A longitudinal box without having some architectural character. Necessary dwelling units, they can be attached or detached and they've been allowed since two thousand and five. Maximum size, height, roof slope, such as nine hundred square foot is the maximum size, but. That doesn't include the garage, so in this case. The garage uh square footage is not included in the area of the accessory dwelling unit that would be involved. The regulations did retain the onsite owner occupancy requirement with some new exceptions. For instance, if the owner were uh in the military and needed to be deployed. That of course could take place without a problem for whatever number of months or years it needed to take place. Minimum record parking requirements again, uh existing standards unchanged because it allows for parking on the street. And one of the big changes in the code was they are allowed in any zone on any lot. With an existing single family residence. In the past, they were only allowed in uh certain single family zones. Following the twenty fifteen parking study, um there's the reduction of minimums for uses that often have underutilized parking. The central business district zone, uh fifty percent less parking required. Introduce maximums to avoid excess cost and wasted land, so in other words. We actually now have a maximum number of parking spaces that you can build uh for, for instance, an office use. Adjustments up or down allowed with a parking study. And providing alternative, alternative transportation options. And we also now include bicycle parking standards uh for all of our multifamily uh businesses. And you know, restaurant use. So this is a little bit of a breakdown and um uh multi-story dwelling construction costs, uh things to think about. We don't really put any numbers in here except for some approximates. But we don't, when you're thinking about construction cost, you're always thinking about the land acquisition costs. And in Anacortes, that can be very expensive. Public improvements, it's typical that the street, the alley. Sidewalk, stormwater, other physical improvements for property location and context. So for instance, uh the five-story building that everybody has seen going up. The street needed improvement, alley, sidewalk, stormwater and water needed to be improved for that project. The um in general, multi-story housing benefits uh from economics of, you know, the benefit from the economics of scale, the bigger. And you know, somewhat taller to the building, the cheaper it should be by the square foot. Um and this is true up to about four floors. Additional factors increased dramatically versus three, but only incrementally incrementally when a fifth level is added. For instance, uh after you get up past that fourth floor or at four levels and up, you're looking at an elevator. And that's hundred thousand dollars plus. Plumbing increases from residential to a commercial license, especially for mixed use. Electrical increases again from residential to commercial, once you get into that pour. Significant foundation and subsoil site work improvements may be needed to support those extra floors. And materials may longer reach the upper levels even with larger mass style forklifts. So you're looking at potentially a crane to get things going up. All the exterior work at the upper levels. Uh are with labor intensive and logistically speaking, create several challenges for, you know, having that construction completed. And culmination of these factors also begin to change the size and capacity of subcontractors in the project o- often. But it can be. Uh it can be rather challenging, once you get over three floors into that four-story. You're looking at uh various types of equipment to make it work. Safely. Um and this is just a slide that talks about uh. Typical parking stall construction cost ranges. For a surface parking stall, anywhere from seven to ten thousand. Above grade structure, fifteen to twenty-five thousand and a below grade structure somewhere around thirty to forty thousand. Anacortes, uh as many of you know, I'm sure. Below go- below grade, there are challenges with uh with water and seepage. And so that makes it even more expensive when you have to look at providing salt pumps and and uh things like that. This is just some examples of existing buildings and what those heights are. You've, you've got the Chandler Square, the clock tower is at fifty foot, library is at forty. Anacortes Family Center um. Past project is forty-two seven. R four zone contacts, so a little better map that shows the R four zone. Um that's the high density. And so north of twenty-second street, it has been zoned R four for several decades. And the R four zone south of twenty-second street or recently zoned R four, changed part three, R four A and R four B. So the area between tenth and twenty-second has been designated the residential high density since at least nineteen seventy-eight. And over time, the format and intensity standards and permitted uses have been adjusted. I- in different ways and in nineteen ninety-four permitted uses included uh single family. Multifamily boarding, rooming houses, clinics, beauty salon offices, hospitals, things like that. And at that time, the maximum building height was thirty-five feet. And fifty foot for non-residential space. And so. Back in nineteen ninety-four, you could have built a fifty-foot non-residential space. That could have been a mixed-use building with offices on the lower floor and residential on the upper floors. In two thousand and eight, the use and height standards were changed to remove offices, galleries and recovery care and assisted living facilities. And group homes from the permitted use and the maximum building height at that time was changed to forty feet. Which is currently the base height without the bonus. So uh and now we can move into some of the draft concepts that were developed during the February twenty-fifth. Twenty twenty community meeting where you will also find in your packet several notes uh in regards to. The cork boards that were around the room and various comments that were written comments that were provided by the community. So this is a, you know, summary of those concepts and I think I have the concepts. Nope, let me go back. So we have the concepts broken up here, um you have group A, let me. Go into. I'm gonna stop sharing and share another. Real quick. And it. That one is not showing up, but take a second, sorry about that. Okay, we'll have to go back to. Um for some reason I don't have the other one. Oh, okay, here we go, so let's try sharing this one. Can you see that one?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. So concept A is to rezone the half block between the commercial zone and O Avenue from R four to commercial. So that's this little area right here, which is a half block. The commercial zone goes in half block and then the other half is R four to O Avenue. You know, that was one of the concepts that came out of the February twenty-fifth meeting. Concept B is to modify the applicability of the bonus site provisions. To only apply to R four area east of O Avenue. And so that would. Apply here in this, this area. And this R four area, which is half a block, would remain the same. So in this one, concept C. It would modify the applicability of the bonus type provisions to terminate at the east side of N Avenue. So that would take it a block further over uh from O Avenue. And in concept D, remove from bonus height eligibility, the entire R four zone west of Commercial Avenue. So that would. Continue to allow this uh the R four area to have buildings up to forty foot, but with no bonus incentive. And so the maximum height would essentially be forty feet. Concept E is to tie the bonus site to mandatory provisions of affordable housing, rent control units. With no small unit option for any building that wanted to use the the bonus height of an additional ten feet in the R four use zone. And this gives you uh some ideas and these numbers are from twenty nineteen and. We can certainly look at updating those at some point if this is uh something that commissioners want to look into. Concept F was not to allow any roof decks on buildings over a certain height. Um and that came out of some concerns from neighbors, uh worried about the folks up on the roof deck. Um basically uh overlooking their buildings. Their single family, two-story or one-story buildings and looking into their yards and and things like that. And concept G, redefine the design standards to mitigate increased height on streetscape and or adjacent properties. And we've got a couple of examples here where perhaps the building would. Um go up three or four floors and then step back eight feet. And you know, this is just an example of what could happen. In other jurisdictions, we've seen where they've gone in and said, okay, the third floor, you step in six feet. The fourth floor, you step in another three feet and then the fifth floor, you step in again. And then on the other portion of that is in the central business uh district in the Old Town Zone, we. Uh the city council and planning, the planning commissioner city council adopted. The requirement that after you get up to twenty-five feet, the building height then is. Directed at a forty-five degree angle until you reach the maximum height. So that you, you don't have that bulk consideration at the property line. Towards, for instance, a smaller, single-story next door. Sharing, so the purpose of this evening's meeting was to. Give the commissioners um an update of, you know, where we've been, where we need to go on this. So staff will. Will be looking at uh within the next couple of weeks, putting together a. Public hearing notice um to get into the newspaper and reaching out on the website. And hopefully getting an article in the newspaper so that more of the community. Uh realizes that we are now talking about this again. And that we would appreciate their um participation in upcoming, upcoming meetings. Because we know that that um as I mentioned earlier, we have two comments that came from Ms. Richardson. One of them, um an interesting concept um. That we may not have thought about, there may be more. That's why we would like to have more community involvement in this process. And I think it's going to be a lengthy process. You know, it's not one that we're going to be able to sit down in, you know, four meetings and um finish up and. And then make a recommendation to the city council. So. With that, what we, what I was hoping for is that if you have any suggestions uh moving forward, I'd be happy to hear those. And then from staff's perspective, again, we want to get the word out. That we're going to be talking about this at the planning commission level. And hopefully hear from the community, hear what other options might be. And then from that, have a discussion with the planning commission towards a recommendation uh to city council at a future date. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Don, can I make some? Start a dialogue uh on this subject now? It's not so much a question, but. Some things I've run into in the past and actually currently. And I've got an idea, et cetera, is that okay?
I'm fine with that if the chair is.
My head. Okay, I'll try to make this short and not ramble. Um. I wasn't involved, obviously, in the prior activity first. For the uh rezoning and the code development that allows for the larger MFs, uh ADUs, et cetera. But I do know that hell, a lot of work was done, a lot of good work. And I feel from what I could see. Members of the planning commission, the city council, the planning department went way. and overboard to communicate with the public. I think it was an excellent job. Reason why I make that judgment is I was the chief negotiator for the cell phone tower. It's now in the United Methodist Church area above the pool. And I worked with, I was part of the church, worked with them, T-Mobile and the community. And that was a two-year effort, and it was a nightmare, very difficult. Long story short, twelve public meetings with the community, went to every house, et cetera, et cetera, and did all the things that you're supposed to do. And when we had the final vote, we were not aware of this, but there was a new member of the community, and he opposed it. And then we found out later he lived in Skyline. No impact whatsoever, but he riled the neighbors up. Eventually, we got the cell phone tower put in, but not with a lot, out of a lot of difficulty in convincing the community of the pros and cons. We were more or less ambivalent, but it was a neat project, and we included everybody. So I know what you have faced in the past, and I think we'll face it again. Many of you guys may not know, but I'm partially involved in this election coming up and have been meeting or in meetings with a lot of the people in the community. And I can tell you that this is a very, very sensitive, misunderstood topic, notwithstanding all of the good work, again, to reiterate that the three organizations did to get out the word. And the elephant in the room on the table is there are a group of people that love the social idea of having, quote, the buzz phrase, affordable housing, but they have the NIMBY symbol, not in my backyard. I assume a lot of you've heard that before. They want to put some on it. It's okay. It's a great idea. Let's put it someplace else. You have the people who say they were never notified about the public meetings. I met one gentleman, Washington Park. He says he represented six hundred people were up in arms on this. And I asked him, did you go to the public meetings? I didn't know anything about it. We didn't know anything about it. I can go on and on, and I won't waste my time. So there's two aspects of this. One is going through all the analysis, all the planning and coming up with what the Planning Department feels is the best approach, and then having our input, et cetera, and obviously the councils. But how do you go about getting the community, all of Anacortes, not small local special interest groups, but all of Anacortes, to some way opine on this? There's thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight registered voters in this city. I can assure you that they, all thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight, are not aware of this. And even if we go through what I call passive activity, i.e. notifying people through newspaper, websites, Chamber of Commerce meetings, getting the word out, it's going to be difficult to get a consensus. And a lot of people are going to put a lot of hard work in to come up with something that is considered the best fit for this city. It's going to be about. It's just a tough job, and I understand that. I wish or would recommend, wish is a better word, I think, if we could, once the committee, the Planning Department, the commission and the City Council come to an agreement, literally find a way to get all thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight people the opportunity to have a voice once and for all, and do that through a ballot measure, a ballot of some sort. I don't know how you work that in a town like Anacortes. I know how it's done in other places, but it could be different here. The point being, they should get everybody to buy in, because this is about all of Anacortes, affordable housing for all of Anacortes, not just for a section of the community. And if we don't figure out a way how to get a buy-in, we'll be paralyzed for years on out, because there'll always be a small group of people that are very vocal that will drive what we do. Now, those are just, I'm just opining now. And I wanted to throw that out there and see what what all of you thought about that. I can tell you this, as a near, a real live thing, we're, it's going to be proposed that we get our one percent tax increase this year to help the budget. I can guarantee you that less than ten percent of the people are not, are going to know that that's going to go in fact. Whether you're in favor of that, whether you're not in favor, I'm not suggesting one way or the other. The point is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna represent myself, say this as myself. Most citizens are pretty lazy. And yes, it's in the newspaper, things are in the newspaper. Yes, things are on the website, and there's outreach groups to different organizations, but by and large, a lot of people don't make the effort to find out what's going on in the community. Now, those, that's apples and oranges, but it's, the concept is the same. I don't want us to, I don't want us to go through a paralyzed effort that doesn't resolve in something positive for the community. You can tell I'm in favor of multifamily housing, and I'm not embarrassed to say that. But I want us to do what's right for the city. And I want the entire city to have a say in it, not just special interest groups. That's why I'm considering a ballot or something like that, to force people to get off their butt and say what they want to do. I'm through with my rant.
Thank you, Mr. Corwin. Any other commissioners have issues or questions? At some point, I have a couple of things I would like to raise.
More Gary Malino here. Mr. Mesmer, when you begin to look at residential size, all of the documentation indicates a minimum of six hundred square feet. And I don't, I tried to read through the material, and I didn't find a justification for that or set of criteria by how that was evaluated. But as you go through the concepts of alternatives, please take a look at a smaller unit size. We're beginning to see in small cities, the whole range of cities, small cities through very large cities, residential units as small as three hundred and fifty square feet going into buildings, you're increasing the overall intensity. You're increasing the viability of affordable housing. But the other point is really strange is that, at least the last couple of projects I was involved in, we did sort of a toss-up whether those were going to be viable or not, and they were the first units that sold in a condominium complex, a complex. And then they were the first units that were rented in a rental complex to make, make truly affordable housing for a whole variety of people who, six hundred square feet, one is not a necessary square footage, but number two, the cost associated, especially if you're looking at three hundred dollars a square foot or above in terms of construction costs. Anyway, please take a look at some alternatives to the minimum of six hundred square feet, please.
Mr. Malino, my recollection is the six hundred foot was a maximum to be considered a small unit for the housing for the additional.
Yes, yes. It was a, oh, I read that, is that it was six hundred square feet was the unit size. That's the way the document read, as opposed to a maximum of six hundred square feet.
Perhaps Mr. Meesmer can correct it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Malino. Yeah, it's a maximum square footage of six hundred square feet. During the, during the development regulations process, in working with our consultants, makers, and city staff, and some of the developers, six hundred square foot was that number that, you know, they felt was, would accommodate, you know, a two-person family, maybe even three. Since then, I have heard that three hundred, four hundred square foot units are the norm in areas like Seattle, Everett, Bellinian, and are really going over well for those communities. So absolutely a good consideration.
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification. I did not catch that in the, in the regs. Thank you.
Mr. Jareski, I saw a handout.
Yeah, again, I think I played a part in, in, in that qualifying, qualifying issue for the extra ten foot, the extra floor on those buildings. And the, and the theory was, we were going for the, for builders who wanted to be affordable, the affordable based on income, it was one category, which is, again, is detailed in, is one of the two options.
Yep.
The problem that I ran into in talking to builders was that they did not want to be monitoring the tenant's income. They didn't want to be asking annually for the W twos or the tax returns. They, in order to, you know, the way, the way it was qualifier was, somebody had to monitor and making sure they were renting to people of a certain income, no more than a certain income level. They just didn't want to do that. They just said, give us another option. So the other option was to put in some smaller units and gain the extra floor. There are people, for example, when we talked about it, there are nurses, there are new teachers. They have good income, so they don't qualify for the, for the, the income ceiling. But they wanted, they wanted decent, safe housing. They didn't necessarily want to have roommates. I talked to a couple of people that had just become teachers, and they had, they had been living with three or four people for years while they're going to college. They really wanted their own privacy, their own unit.
Yes.
Didn't have to be six hundred feet. It could be four hundred and fifty. The builders are going to drive that based on the, on the maximum footage they could get and still use twenty-five percent of the building. So that was just the max, to make sure they weren't building two-bedroom units or bigger, a bigger unit.
Right. That's greatly appreciated.
Any others?
If I could just tag on to what Frank said. I think from a marketing perspective of how we engage the community to talk about it in terms of housing choices. Some people, when you say affordable, they get, it has a, maybe a negative connotation, but people are in different stages of their lives. Like, yeah, when I first started out, I needed a small place to live. I was a professional, but that was what I needed. So. And I also, you know, when I was looking at the, the concepts and the different places, I mean, you know, also what Mike said, we need to, we need to engage the community, and some people are easier than others, but just for like a framework of how to engage them, I was thinking like choices, like this is about choices in terms of housing for people who are in different stages of life. I don't know. Some people, when you say affordable, they just utterly check out, gone. And I, I think it's bigger than that. I think we don't want, we want to have people at all stages of their lives, live in Anacortes, not just certain people. Because, you know, you need, you need people at all stages, so you have teachers for your children, so that you have, you know, all different people at different ages. I think that's a healthy community. And, you know, when I looked at these concepts, I thought, oh, they can be mixed and mashed. This is about choosing how we want our community to be. That's an exciting thing. That's a cool thing, and everyone should have a say in that. So I don't know, maybe as, just as a way to engage, like, think of it as choices and it's something that I thought about with everyone's discussion and a way to broach the subject.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, Mr. Meesmer, and then a couple of comments, if I may. Can you run the numbers over the growth management projections? I can't recall from the presentation, the total number of new people that are expected to be accommodated to live here in Anacortes. And compare that to the number of potential new single-family residences that could still be built on the available land.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we, during the comprehensive plan process, we did a available land analysis. So you'll find a chapter in the comprehensive plan on that. And we can, based on the numbers that are provided us through the Scottish Council of Governments and so forth, with what the numbers are, which I want to, I want to be very clear that those are really just numbers for the city to plan towards. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's, you know, something that is set in stone about what the city is actually going to see for those four numbers. So for us to, you know, plan on, on that, we're looking at an additional, close to six thousand people twenty thirty-six, and about twenty-two hundred additional dwelling units. And from what we've seen over the past years, we are mostly looking at predominantly single-family as eighty percent of our housing stock. And so we're not, you know, we haven't been seeing the, the numbers of multifamily, although it's, you know, it's due to the recent development regulations and comprehensive plan changes that we're seeing the housing variety that we're seeing now with multifamily cottage housing, accessory dwelling units, condominiums, and townhomes. The, the past two years have been seeing the results of those changes moving forward.
So if I understand correctly, then twenty-two hundred dwelling units of various sorts throughout the city, and we don't know exactly how many of those might be in more dense areas?
That's correct. You know, when we did the land analysis, available lands analysis, you know, what we did was took what we see as redevelopable property in the future. For instance, if we think about some of the areas that may be near the downtown core, we would look at those and say, okay, well, the new code would say that we don't have a maximum density, and so we might be able to get this number of units out of that. And then we look at the areas, say, western city limits, in the west city limits, skyline area. We know exactly what's gonna, you know, what you're going to get for housing out there based on maximum seventy-five hundred square foot lot sizes and what's left that hasn't been built on. What, what we know, from my experience, what we know is that we're running at about oh, seventy single families a year to ninety single families a year, depending on pandemic year or recession year, things like that. And so my experience tells me we're probably not going to meet the goal that the Scottish Council of Governments gave us for our population allocation. And there's been some talk at the county level about that. And best case scenario for Anacortes is for Anacortes and the community to plan based on the comprehensive plan that was developed in twenty sixteen, which is what the planning commissioners and city councils did with the most current development regulations in setting the stage to allow for the very, the various housing types. And, and, and in my opinion, it's starting to work.
So I, I wanted to note that out of the options that are listed, there's no null option. There's no option to simply leave things the way they are. And I wondered, what, what are the expectations of the council? They're referring this back to the Planning Commission. And if there's no null option here, does that mean they're going to insist on something? And if there's no null option here, does that mean they're going to insist on something changing? Or what, what's, what's the field we're playing with here?
Uh, I appreciate that, that question. And so there is an option of just leaving it the way it is. Um, and there's an option of, um, as Ms. Rutter's mentioned, of blending some things together. And there might be an option that we haven't even, that folks haven't even thought about yet. But there definitely is an option for the planning commission to recommend the city council to, um, not amend the code and to leave it as it sits.
The reason I raise this issue is that I don't think we should preclude options at this point. We need to have everything on the table. Um, having been through several years of, um, very detailed analysis and looking at the, at the codes, I thought that the planning commission worked pretty hard to balance what was in the comprehensive plan and the demands for, that were being placed on housing in this area, escalating prices and the attempt to find housing that people who could live here and work here could afford. And part of that involved greater density in certain areas of the community. So we were, we were working with an existing zoning that already allowed for 40-foot tall buildings. And we were looking at proposals for providing a bonus to make it more likely for someone to develop buildings in that area so that we would get better results and get more, more options available. So I, I just don't want to preclude the idea that maybe we're on the right track, maybe we weren't. That was a huge job that everybody had to do and there certainly could be improvement. But I don't want to not consider that maybe it was the right decision in the first place either.
Thank you.
Mr. Graff?
Thank you. Hey, Ward, good questions. Because I think, I think what's gonna end up happening over the next several months is we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make a determination here on be, on behalf of the community on where to go with this. And I'm happy to hear that, one, doing nothing and leaving the status quo is an option. Although I've heard several folks on city council who are currently running for other offices already say it's not gonna happen. Um, so I don't know how viable that would be if we decided to push that up to city council, would it, would it be accepted? But the other point that you made about what is the anticipated growth of Anacortes? And are the numbers that we were given from, um, the SCOG and the state with regards to the growth management act accurate? Now, I was happy to hear Don say that, hey, that's, that's just a, that's just, that's something that's out there. We don't really anticipate getting to that point. Because I would argue, if you look at the numbers given for the future and historically where we've been at, we're probably looking at about 33% more uh, population growth being estimated than has happened over the last 10 years, right? And so that would lead to, do we really need to build as many homes? Single-family, multifamily, and, and in what combination would those be affordable, right? And so if we could, if we could kind of rein in the scope and what the expectation and what the requirements are, it might ma- make our job a little bit easier. You know, I thought Sarah brought up some good points. But again, I think the focus of what we need to do is not necessarily decide what to build, but where to build it. And my concern is, is if we close off too much of the current R4 zone where, you know, these are currently authorized to build, there really isn't any other place to go. I went through the growth management act, I went through the available land analysis, and the only time those numbers actually look like they're gonna start to be able to be usable or workable is if we start opening up the Marches Point area and the Highway 20 area going out of town. And I don't know if, if the city is serious yet to say, okay, that's where these types of places are gonna go. Um, because the community that I've been listening to suggests the only place that they would like to see them go is in the commercial business district. And we already know if we were to do the, these kinds of developments in the commercial this, business district, the buildings would have to be modified before they even started to be constructed into apartments. I mean, I've said a lot there. But, I mean, this is, this is, I, I think Mike brings up a very good point about the fact that the city as a whole needs to be in on this and they need to buy in on the decisions that we make. And right now, the only way where we're gonna, we're gonna get a 51% majority vote on this is if we put it to a ballot. And I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but that might be the only way to do this with it. And then finally, the city can say, hey, you all had an opportunity to make a decision on this. This is where the majority of us went and this is what we're gonna do.
So, uh, uh, a question, Mr. Chair. Then are, are we aggregating our, our responsibility? Why not put the, the doc we had up tonight up to a vote? Uh, we, we are, have been granted a responsibility to take forward a vision and a proposal to the community. But I, I'm, I'm not aware of any communities where every zoning issue is a, is a, uh, is a ballot issue.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if ma- may I just make one quick point to that? I agree with what Gary just said. But what's unfortunate is, is that planning commission did all the hard work. We had a lot of people in the community there during these planning commissions. The planning department did a lot of hard work. They, we presented this to the city council, everybody on city council voted for this. And then when the shovels hit the dirt and the building started going up, it was the city council that said, oh, wait a minute, we're gonna do this moratorium. And now we're in month 25 to 30 now where we've kicked this moratorium down the road to make a decision on what leadership said was what we needed to do for the city. But we had a small minority of folks say, no, we need to stop this. And now, you know, we're, we could possibly get ourselves into a situation where we, we stop it in the entire R4 zone, depending on what concept comes up as, as being the one selected. But I agree with you, Gary, and you bring up very good points there.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mees?
I really appreciate the discussion this evening. It's very enlightening. One of the things that has come out of this for me so far is Ms. Ritter's comments in regards to choices. And that's really what this is all about, housing choices. Um, and when it comes down to whether or not we're going to be able to meet the demand for the projected growth, uh, that was accepted by the council through our development regulation comprehensive plan process, you know, um, yeah, we're not gonna see that kind of growth. Uh, I think Mr. Graff really hit it on the head. 30% is probably close to what we've seen in the past. The, um, the process moving forward is one that I appreciate the conversation of the planning commission this evening in that the planning department needs to do everything it can to inform the community and get the community to the table. In the past, we've done a couple of different things. We have sent postcards to every resident in town, letting them know that we are having conversations. We did that, for instance, on the comprehensive plan. We also did that on the Shroine's Master Program update. We can certainly do something like that and I, I would look forward to doing that. And just, you know, um, get out to some of the service organizations, let them know what's going on so that they can let their friends and relatives know as well. So that, that is our first line out the door, is to get the word out. Um, we, we need to have the conversation. The alternatives that I mentioned today are not the end-all. There are other options that will come out of this process. And one of those options is recommendations to the council, go with what we've already got. That's an option. And so, uh, with that, we have at a staff level quite a bit of work to do. We will be, uh, working with other jurisdictions that have taller buildings to see how they've, it's worked for them. We also are going to be working with, hopefully, a consultant to develop a housing action plan. The state legislator, legislatures authorized a grant just recently of up to $75,000. The city made application for that last Friday. We're hoping that we're successful. Out of that will come a housing needs analysis that could help with this process that we're going through right now. Um, and I don't know for sure if we're going to be successful with the grant. If we're not successful with the grant, um, I'm going to try and, um, find a way to work with a consultant and develop that housing needs analysis. That will help us.
Mr. Graff?
Don, before, before we have to hire a consultant, is there, is there anything that we can glean from the processes that we went through with makers during the commerc- the comprehensive, um, planning process? Is there anything that we could get from any of the other previous affordable housing studies that were done? I think I came across something in 2015. That was a city of Anacortes sponsored housing, affordable housing, um, study. Is there anything that the SCOG and the county has done that we could possibly use on our behalf instead of having to spend city resources to hire, to hire a consultant?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Graff, yes, uh, good point. And there are previous studies that we can use. Uh, if we're successful for the grant, then we won't need to. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we're successful on the grant and we'll be able to move through that. Um, I, I'm not sure if you all have, uh, been watching some of the legislative activities that has taken place, um, in 2021 and expected more in 2022. Housing choices, housing affordability was a big issue at the 2021 state legislature. And through that, um, they're requiring that cities address such things as accessory dwelling units, triplexes, duplexes and fourplexes in single-family residential zones. Now, with our development regulations, we have fairly well addressed all of those. But we will need to go back and switch up a few things on the accessory dwelling units. For instance, um, owner required to live in, in one or the other units. That's one item that the legislators came out with that needs to be changed in our, our code. Um, the other is the housing action plan. And that's something that we'll be developing over the next year. It needs to be done by 2023, if my mind, or if my memory serves me correctly. Thank you. So we've got a lot of work to do on that. And in my mind, again, the housing needs analysis is going to help us through this process. Hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. It seems to me that, um, we'll look forward to hearing from all parts of the community. We have stakeholders here that include developers who we hope to have come and put some buildings up. We have people who would like to be able to live in a house that they could actually afford. And we have people who own properties here who want to be able to use their properties. And the planning commission's mission, as I see it, is to do that balancing act and make sure that we help this community prepare for the next 20 years. Um, that being said, are there any other comments from the other commissioners? And I'm looking forward to our next occasion when we discuss this topic. Uh, do you think we'll be on the next meeting or we'll, we'll look for the publication for the, for the public hearing then?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we'll be a couple of weeks out on this, if not more. Our next, um, meeting will be, um, the floodplain management code. And we, uh, should have our report on sea level rise for that meeting.
That'll be nice to get that concluded. Uh, any other business for the good of the organization? Can I see a hand up? Mr. Juret, Mr. Juret?
Yeah, I, I want to, uh, say thank you to Mr. Graff for pointing out something I really hadn't, really hadn't thought about real heavily. But as I recall, uh, Mr. Meesmer, uh, planning commission, the planning department and the city council ultimately spent over three years with consultants and meetings. He tried to reach the community every single way possible. And as soon as a few people got vocal, everybody backed off, or not everybody, but all of a sudden we started getting moratoriums. Something that had taken a lot of work, a lot of work. A lot of builders, um, held up, uh, developing property, waiting for the end result of whether they were, we're not gonna get that extra, that extra story, that extra 10 feet. Uh, matter of fact, I know builders that have given up, uh, developing their property because of that. Uh, they just got worn out and tired by it. So to Mr. Graff's point, you know, let's say we spend the next six months hashing this out one way or another. A, a few vocal people certainly have, have, have caused mayhem to all that work. And I, I kind of wonder, uh, how we, how we get past that where a few people can, can just basically squash all the work that's been done. And I guess that's my comment or my question.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other comments? With that, I think it's time to bring this meeting to a close. Thank you, everybody, for your, um, thoughtful comments. And we'll look forward to hearing from the community during our next public hearing on this topic. Thank you, one and all, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.